Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the regular monthly meeting of the town of Fairfield, RTM, Monday, May 23, 2022. Let's see, we have some news for District Two.
Yes, this is Cindy Param, Representative from District Two, and I would like to welcome William Gerber to the RTM effective immediately. He was voted in last week by the Caucus of District Two. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you, Cindy. Welcome back, Bill. Thank you. Okay. Town Clerk Betsy Brown, roll call, please.
Hi Bateson.
Here.
Here. Marty Fury.
Here.
Amy Roggero. Bill Gerber.
Here.
Karen McCormick.
Here.
Cindy Param.
Here.
Jeff Steele.
Here.
Alex Darrell.
Here.
Jeff Galdenzi. Lambert.
Here.
Sharon Pastilli.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Alice Kelly.
Here.
Chrissy Spolier.
Here.
Liz Zesma.
Here.
L Diaz.
Here.
Ash Garskoff.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
A Wolk.
He's trying to get on right now. He'll be back soon.
Steve Barrett.
Here.
Hannah Gale.
Here.
Andy Grisafa.
Here.
Lisa Havy.
Here.
John Kuhn.
Yeah.
Mark McDermott.
Here.
Olver Garra. Karen Whackerman.
Here.
Hank Ferentz.
Here.
Laia Kono.
Here.
Christine Messina.
Here.
Pete Tallman. Christine Brown.
Here.
Drew Giorgiades.
Here.
Brett Horton.
Here.
Lee Sinto.
Here.
Hannah Starita.
Here.
Peter Britton.
Here.
Frank Patisse.
Here.
And Story Tallman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You're muted, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, guys. Can you hear me now? Thank you, Josh. So we have four items on the consent calendar. Item number five is the MOU agreement with the City of Bridgeport for the Rooster River, which we are going to have to take to public comment due to statute. Item number seven, which is the resolution on the cost of the emergency radio projects. Item number nine, which is the cost of the transfer station, $450,000. And item number 12, which is the bond resolution for the rooftop HVAC at the Ward High School Fitz House. And I have a motion to approve. Representative Wolk, seconded by Representative Carson. Thank you. I will take item number five. I will read it. "Consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen, resolved that the first select woman be and hereby is authorized to enter into the proposed MOU agreement with the City of Bridgeport for the Fairchild Wheeler Detention Project from ARPA funds dedicated to Rooster River flood mitigation, ARPA Rooster River account number 14501010-5996-81007, Rooster River Detention Area." Do I have, if there's anybody in the public that would like to make a comment, put your name in the chat, please? Okay, seeing none. Anybody in from the body have an issue with with this consent calendar? Representative Wolk?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jay Wolk, District Five. I just have a quick comment. I'm really very happy to hear that this project is being started. It is a major problem on our end of town. I'm not negating the problem that's happening downtown or on the beach area, because we're all having a problem, but I'm glad that this money is being well-spent. It's been long coming till this problem with the flooding of the Rooster River finally gets some attention with monetary money. So I'll end it on this, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hurley, for all that you're doing to see this project through. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wolk. Does anybody have an issue with these four items grouped together? All right, I'm going to take it to a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the consent calendar is unanimously approved. Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's go back to item number two, to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on April 25, 2022, and the annual budget meeting held on May 2, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Param, seconded by Representative Gale. Anybody have any comments or need to change anything in the minutes from those meetings? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Hi, Bill Gerber. I wasn't a member at that point.
Thank you, Bill. Motion carries. Okay, item number four, to consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the first select woman, resolved that a certain agreement negotiated by and between the town of Fairfield and the Fairfield Police Union, Connecticut Organization for Public Safety Local Number 530 concerning conditions of employment for the period commencing July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2025, be and hereby is ratified. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Seibert, seconded by Representative Ferentz. Any further comments or questions on this item from the body? Okay, I'll take comments from the public. If you wish to speak, you have two minutes, and you can put your name in the chat. Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, and it looks like we're probably going to lose half our audience now. Looking at page three on my Okay, thank you, fellas, for showing up tonight, and congratulations. All right. Item number five, we already did. Item number six is to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, resolved that the bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $1,949,778, $1,949,778 for the costs of townwide facility system upgrades and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Kelly, seconded by Representative Carson. Any questions, comments? Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Okay. Talkative group tonight, seeing none. Let's go to the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Ryan. You had a lot of things to fix now. So let's get to work, buddy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number seven, we've already done. Item number eight, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, resolved that the board resolution, bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $2,250,000 for the tidegate system project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. And I have a motion to approve. Representative Whackerman, seconded by Representative Havy. Mr. Bishop, are you here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nobody wanted to step into your place last week, so maybe you can give everybody just a brief little explanation, and see if we have any further questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. This is for the replacement of the tidegate system that was in the hopper before I took this position. It goes back to about 2019. The triple tidegates are located on Pine Creek, next to Quanis Field, north of Old Dam Road. They were originally installed in 1980, replaced in 1999, and subsequent repairs in 2010 and 2012. Similar to my previous presentations, they are in due, in need of replacement due to age. Basically, some of them are, one of them's failing. It's been replaced in the past couple of weeks as far as the mechanism on the gate, flapping gate itself. As people who know the area know, there's a railroad bridge of historic value that was fabricated in 1870 that is in our way and presenting a challenge we're currently dealing with, State Historic Preservation Office, to to remove that and restore it in a different position that's not in the way. The current engineering design calls for abandonment of the three existing self-regulating tidegates with replacement of five. That will do a few things. Number one, realign the channel to its natural flow direction, as well as give us extra capacity and control, you know, given the projected forecast of future rain and storm events with sea level rise. Because of that realignment and and design, the historic bridge is in our way. And again, we're working with SHIP-O to mitigate that. With that approval from SHIP-O, that's a requirement of the Army Corps permit. We have a conditional full approval from Connecticut Deep at the moment, so with SHIP-O's approval, we could lock up and finalize our permit with the Army Corps. I think that's about it. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Any questions on this item? From the body? Okay, I'll take it to the public. Any questions from the public?
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. I had put something in the chat, and I also raised my hand. Sorry.
I apologize. Sorry.
Sorry.
It just came through on my computer. Fine. Representative Agar.
I apologize. Jill Vergara for District Seven. Tim, I am going to apologize to you for this question, because I just have her in in my notes, and I was trying to pull up the backup to just see what I was trying to, but I think in your memo, you had other considerations, and I didn't really fully understand what the other considerations were. Can you explain that part?
So during construction and installation of the five new five new tidegates, this part of the 14 points just pointed out that we would just make sure that the earthen dike is intact from end to end. There is trees and vegetation growing in it now that could, in theory, compromise compromise the structure. So when this process is executed, I would like to make sure that that is in our contract and taken care of.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Agar. Anybody else from the body? I'll give it a few more ticks and not be so quick. Okay, seeing none, I'll take it to the public now. Anybody from the public want to comment on the tidegates? Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, looks like that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tim, for coming tonight.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I have to apologize to everybody. I made a mistake tonight. We have to go back to item number three. I inadvertently checked it off, and I missed it, sorry. "Consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the Town Planning and zoning Commission, resolved that the town of Fairfield opt out of the state mandated parking regulations in default language for accessory apartments pursuant to Public Act 21-29." Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Zesma, seconded by Representative Whackerman. I'll take comments, but let's just, this item requires a two-thirds vote, so we'll do a roll call vote after we have the comments. Okay, so Representative Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Lambert, District Three, just have a comment. I'm going to be voting likely against this item, simply because I do not think I can support any sort of measure in this town, either state or local level, that restricts housing further. I do understand, however, that this resolution is a byproduct of an agreement on the TPZ to actually further expand accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments, as we call them in town, as well as other measures, which are measures that I do support. I just can't personally support or get behind measures that I think are going to further restrict housing, so I'll be voting most likely no on this resolution.
Thank you, Representative Lambert. Any other comments from the body? Okay, seeing none, I will take this to the public. If anybody from the public has a comment, please write your name in the chat. All right. Seeing none. Betsy, can we do a roll call vote, please? That's lovely music.
It wasn't me.
I didn't think it was.
I'm not that musical. Bateson?
Yes.
Marty Fury?
Yes.
Liz Longo?
Yes.
Amy Roggero?
Yes.
Bill Gerber?
Yes.
Karen McCormick?
Yes.
Cindy Param?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
Yes.
Alex Darrell?
Yes.
Jeff Galdenzi?
Yes.
Tom Lambert?
Pass.
Sharon Pastilli?
Yes.
Mark Carson?
Yes.
Alice Kelly?
Yes.
Chrissy Spolier?
Yeah.
Liz Zesma?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Ash Garskoff?
Yes.
Joe Seibert?
Yes.
A Wolk?
Yes.
Steve Barrett?
Yes.
Hannah Gale?
Yes.
Andy Grisafa?
Pass.
Lisa Havy?
Yes.
John Kuhn?
Yes.
Mark McDermott?
Yes.
Jill Vergara?
Yes.
Whackerman?
Yes.
Hank Ferentz?
Yes.
Pamela Laia Kono?
Yes.
Christine Messina?
Yes.
Pete Tallman?
Yes.
Christine Brown?
Yes.
Drew Giorgiades?
Pass.
Margaret Horton?
Yes.
Ellie Sinto?
Yes.
Hannah Starita?
Yes.
Peter Britton?
Yes.
Frank Patisse?
Yes.
Story Tallman?
Yes.
Tom Lambert?
No.
Andy Grisafa?
No.
Drew Giorgiades?
No.
Motion passes 37-3.
Thank you. Okay, let me make sure I don't skip an item. We did. Item number 10, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, resolved that the bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $4,125,000 for the costs of the Roger Ludlow Middle School turf field project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wolk. Representative Whackerman, thank you. Any comments on this item? Representative Agar, you have an amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jill Vergara for District Seven. I'd like to offer an amendment to this resolution. I'd like to revise the resolution as follows, for it to read, "As recommended by the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield, the town hereby appropriates the sum of $4,125,000 and $0.00 for the costs to convert the existing multipurpose fields at the Roger Ludlow Middle School to artificial turf. This is the part that I'm adding, using either acrylic coated sand and virofill, infill, or thermoplastic elastomer, TPE infill, and to install new lighting at the fields. This is another additional language that meets the specifications of the International Dark Sky Association and all related engineering, administrative finance, financing, legal contingency, and other soft costs to the project."
Thank you. You have a second from Representative Laia Kono. And a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I'd like to second the amendment that Representative Agar put forward. And then I just have a couple of comments on it. I don't know if Representative Agar wanted to go first. I defer to her, and I'd comment afterwards if she had something she wanted to offer.
That's okay. Thanks, Pam. You can go first.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, through you to Mr. Calabrese. Anthony's here, right? We received confirmation this afternoon from our bond counsel, Attorney Staffstrom, and I just wanted to specify for the record, we were seeking whether or not that this would have to go back through the other bodies if adding this language was going to cause a potential price increase. And I just want to confirm with you that based on what you are estimating that using both of these products should meet the bond resolution as it's written right now. That is correct. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I also wanted to offer up just a couple of thoughts on the resolution itself from a formatting standpoint. I, while I personally do not think that we should be adding this type of language to bonding resolutions, and that was confirmed by our bond counsel. We all read the opinion that he sent back, and he said, quote, "While we do not usually like such specificity in bond resolutions, there is nothing prohibiting the suggested conditions to the project." "I would note that when clients have dealt with turf specifications, the understanding as to turf or grass or turf specifications has been just that, an understanding between the approving bodies and the responsible municipal department, and not a specific condition in the bond resolution." "I believe what he wrote here is really how we should be doing this. I think it should be an understanding between the department head and the appropriating body, which in this case is obviously the RTM." "I think that Anthony was very clear on the record of what the two products were going to be. I think we were all very clear in our messaging that we wanted it to be either one of those products, and that I, and I agree that this should not, we should not be bogging down our bond." not be bogging down our bond resolutions with such specificity. However, that said, I want to thank the moderator sincerely for reaching out to me to ask our caucus to consider this amendment. It was a great example of bipartisanship. It's something that we really, really need on this body that has not been happening. I was happy to have the resolution with the amendment. I was happy to present it to our caucus. And in the interest of bipartisanship, as none of us think that this turf field should be political, um, we do stand in support of it. So I thank you for reaching across the aisle on this. Um, again, I hope we don't make a habit of bogging down the bond resolutions, um, with this type of specifics and that instead we use the record to reflect what our direction is. Um, and, um, I think this will be a really good thing for Fairfield should it pass. So thank you very much. Sincerely appreciate the outreach and, um, I do support the amendment.
Thank you, Representative Iacono. Uh, Representative Vergara, did you want to comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Representative Iacono. Um, I'm happy that your caucus will be joining us and I do think that it was a great example of working together. Um, I do disagree respectfully that, um, this was clearly laid out and that, uh, by Mr. Calabrese. Um, there was ambiguity. It caused confusion in the public. Um, the memo read chrome rubber, um, several presentations, uh, encapsulated chrome rubber was stated at the meeting as being the fill. And it's a highly controversial issue. Many people are really against, um, any kind of infill with recycled rubber or virgin rubber. So I just, I really think it's important just with the, I, with this project to be specific with it. Um, and I appreciate working together on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Representative Zesma?
Uh, Representative Liz Zesma, District Four. Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, Representative Vergara said pretty much what I was going to say. Um, I, I agree with Representative Iacono if we didn't have that vagarity of using chrome rubber. And I'm wondering if in the future, when we notice something like that, that may have been an error in the backup, that we can have that, um, revised, um, for further clarification. But I'm also very, you know, happy to have the body come together on this and thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Zesma. Representative Gale?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hannah Gale, District Six. Um, I would like to, uh, say a thank you to all of the residents who sent in letters specifically asking us to not approve, uh, these fields for the reasons that I, um, have discussed on other occasions, that we are against the tide of, uh, the realization that these forever chemicals, these PFAs and these plastics are potentially very, very harmful. Um, I don't really understand why Fairfield in particular just keeps having challenges with a lack of understanding of the potential for harm for all of these chemicals that have been around our town. Um, you know, these are, the children of Fairfield are the ones who are going to pay in the distant future, you know? I hope that that's not true, but all of the evidence coming in on all of these plastics is pretty damning. So I'm just going to ask the body one more time. I understand that everyone wants children to play on fields, but is it, is it worth it? Reel it. Please consider.
Thank you, Representative Gale. Are there any further comments on the amendment that's before us? Okay, um, does anybody want it read again or are we all good? I'm good. Okay, so we'll take it to the vote then. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstentions? Okay, that amendment passes and becomes the new motion before us. Um, are there any other comments from the body on this new motion as amended? Representative Vergara?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jill Vergara for District Seven. I appreciate what Representative Gale is saying. I definitely understand where she's coming from and I have had these concerns in the past and I've stood with her in front of this body, asking us to reconsider these kinds of renovations and installations. Um, my, I, I think that something happened over the pandemic where I really saw how much my children were, um, positively impacted by sports and, um, how necessary it became, um, through this time, these past two years, to be outside, to be with teammates, learning, um, and socializing. And, um, my husband is a coach. I've seen the crisis that we're having with fields and access to fields. Um, and it's a serious problem. Uh, so, uh, I'm trying to weigh these two, two different interests and I think that it's very important for our kids to get outside and, um, be active right now, especially, especially after the pandemic. So it's really pushed me over the edge to supporting this. That doesn't say that I blindly support, um, artificial turf fields. I really hope that our town considers this fully, really does ca- a cost benefit analysis, a thorough cost benefit analysis in the future for any of these projects going forward and considers alternatives. Grass is the best alternative and we are positioned as a town, because we under invested in these fields, to actually be in a good position to move ourselves forward in a way that other towns can't right now. Um, Massachusetts has successfully established these great grass turf fields and I think that we need to investigate that, irrigate our fields properly, seed them properly and maintain them properly, have our kids play on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Representative Whackerman?
Karen Whackerman, District Seven. Um, I, first of all, I'm very grateful for all the comments, all the notes we've gotten from people. Um, and it's just increased my difficulty in how to vote on this. Um, like Representative Vergara said, I recognize how important good fields are. My kids grew up in another town, but so many practices and games were canceled because of mud and bad fields. Um, but I'm also very concerned about the environmental impacts of this and the potential health, um, risks. So I would like to, um, strongly ask, um, Mr. Calabrese if, if he can consider trying to, um, do the work that Jill's, Representative Vergara is mentioning and, um, have us, have strong, sustainable grass fields that are, that can be played on. Um, I think I'll probably end up voting in favor of this because I know we have, we need the fields, but I hope that perhaps this will be the last turf field we have to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Whackerman. Uh, Representative Pistilli?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator, Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Um, I wanted to echo the comments of Representative Vergara and Representative Whackerman. Um, my main concern is for the environment and going forward, I would absolutely like to, you know, if we can, um, you know, given the cost considerations, install actual grass fields instead of more synthetic materials. Um, but our kids need to play. Our fields are in horrible shape. So I'm, um, plan on supporting the less than perfect approach. Um, but, but I think, you know, given all of the feedback that we've gotten from residents, they want fields to play on. And then those who are concerned about the environment, which were a significant minority who wrote in, um, i- if, if we can make everyone happy in the future by, by going with, with real materials, um, I think that that would be the better approach. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative Pistilli. Any other comments from the body? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Um, you, I'll give you three minutes to talk. Uh, Representative Spolier, could you be the timekeeper for me, please? And, um, uh, Mr. O'Connor, Dylan O'Connor, you have, uh, you're in the chat. You've got three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Can you, can you hear me? Am I coming through all right?
You're coming through.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Dylan O'Connor. I'm at thirty-one Lola Street in Fairfield. Um, I, uh, am part of the Fairfield Athletic Foundation, which is, um, the reason why a number of the representatives on this body received emails. Um, I want to encourage all of those who are kind of on the fence related to the environment and the health concerns to consider the fact that, you know, we, Fairfield has had three of our own turf fields for the last fifteen years. Um, all of our kids have been playing on turf fields for the last fifteen to twenty years. There are roughly fifty turf fields within a fifteen mile radius of the town of Fairfield. So any, any child that plays sports seriously and competitively is playing on these fields. And, uh, I, you know, I'm not at all dismissing the idea that there could potentially be environmental concerns down the road, but with the data that we have now and with the anecdotal experience that we have, having our children play on fields for the last fifteen to twenty years, I think it's a safe bet to say that, that these fields, uh, are, are safe from an environmental and health standpoint. I can't recall reading anything about any environmental issues in the town of Fairfield or any of the towns around us related to turf fields. Uh, same goes with the health benefits of our kids. And, and the fact of the matter is, in the northeast where we are, if you want a robust athletic program, turf needs to be an option. We are, uh, at the Fairfield Athletic Foundation, we are not saying that we want turf everywhere. We want the right mix of turf and grass. We love grass fields, but the fact remains, grass fields need to be rested. And if they're not rested, they get destroyed, which is what you saw at Sullivan Field. Um, so we are looking to find the right mix of turf fields and grass, grass fields. Um, and we hope that, you know, uh, relative to all the information that was sent in from residents and, and some of the information that was provided by our foundation around health and environmental concerns, I hope that anybody on the fence, um, will, you know, consider voting for this because it's, it's a much needed part of our athletic infrastructure. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any other comments from the public? Okay, uh, seeing none. Uh, Representative, uh, Giatis?
Hi, Drew Giatis, District Nine. Um, my four boys, uh, went to public school here in Fairfield. Um, they're now in their mid twenties. Um, I do have, um, environmental concerns. My kids grew up playing on turf, playing on grass and, uh, when a lot of these turf fields were chrome rubber. Um, I'm not sure if you can dismiss the, the, uh, medical concerns. Sometimes, um, lymph node issues, cancer issues don't, um, show up for years. But one of the biggest concerns and I saw over and over again, um, was the sports injuries, the torn ACLs. Um, and, um, for that reason, I really hope that this town can, um, have a mix of the grass and the turf. Um, also to educate parents as far as the size of the, um, spikes on the cleats and not wait till you have tor- of a torn ACL, which my children experienced, um, in order to, uh, realize that the kind of cleats for grass is different from turf. It's complicated. Um, we all want the best for our kids and, um, sometimes we don't know exactly what that is. Um, so anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Giatis. Uh, Representative Darrell?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Mr. McModerator. Uh, through you to Mr. Calabrese.
Did you just say Mr. McModerator?
I'm sorry, Mr. McDermott, Mr.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator's enough.
Okay, I apologize.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry for interrupting.
Problem is Anthony on during our segue there.
Anthony is here.
Okay.
Bill here.
Hi, Anthony. Just one quick question. I was at the field yesterday. I mean, you guys know dimensions better than I do, but how could a baseball field not be able to be fit on that? I understand if there are foul balls going on the ninety-five or something, but it seems like the dimensions are big enough.
Yeah, to, to put a high school baseball field there in the right orientation, which would be northeast, you've got to put the home plate back near the parking lot and then down the line, you need to have a minimum of three hundred, you're supposed to have a minimum of three hundred and twenty-five feet down left field, down right field. Uh, center field's supposed to be four hundred. You don't have the three twenty-five down either line.
Okay, okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Representative Darrell. All right, anybody else from the body have any comments or questions? Uh, Representative Tomlin? You have a question or are you just asking? I like to use my name.
To Anthony.
You're a little, can't hear you, Peter, that well. Sorry.
To Anthony. Can you get a waiver for those dimensions?
It is possible. It's possible to ask the, uh, CIAC for a waiver, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Good luck on this, bud. Good job. Bud, time.
Thank you, Representative Peter Tomlin. All right, anybody else? I got a nine o'clock, uh, virtual meeting with my team in Hong Kong. I might be able to make. All right, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed?
No.
Representative Galdenzi and Representative Gale, her nose?
Giatis.
Representative Giatis. Anybody else? Abstentions? All right, I'm assuming that motion carries. I think we're all here tonight, thirty-seven to three. Thank you, everybody. And, uh, thank you, Pat, for your kind words. Um, I, uh, I, I think we need to do a better job in the future of, uh, reaching across the aisle, talking to each other about some of these, uh, big issues. So I appreciate it. Um, all right. Representative Eleven, Representative Eleven. All right, item number eleven. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, resolve that the bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating twenty-two million seven hundred and one thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars for the costs associated with phase one of the air conditioning upgrade project at various schools, authorizing grants to reimburse one million one hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Havy, seconded by Representative Diaz. Any questions from the body here? All right, that's cool. Let's go to the public. Anybody in the public? Comments? Question about AC? H back. All right, back to the body. Um, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that motion carries unanimously. All right, item number twelve, we already did, item thirteen, uh, we have moved to, uh, move that item to next month, June. Item number fourteen, to consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the Representative Town Meeting. Anything else? Anybody? Wow, all right. Fifty-two minutes tonight, thank goodness, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Representative Grisaffa, seconded by Representative Ferentz, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 See everybody next month, thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. McModerator.
Moderator.
Thank you.